Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday night, November 23rd, 7:00 PM. And we'd like to welcome all of you tonight. We have three major areas of our meeting. The first one is a public hearing on bed and breakfast. This will be followed by two committee meetings with Finance and Personnel, then City Services. And then we'll have some readings of ordinances. And much like the format for League of Women Voters, we're going to take the same approach here tonight. This is, number one, it's a public hearing. But I would like to remind everyone that there's to be no chanting, no signs. If anyone wishes to speak after we've given a little bit of the background information, you're welcome to come to the podium. You need to sign in. Print your name, please, so we have it for the official record. And then you also need to speak your name so that those who are watching the TV can also see that. So I'll begin with a little bit of background information about the bed and breakfast and our process here. In September of 2015, the Athens City Planning Commission, after several months of review, came forward to City Council with a recommendation on bed and breakfasts. And much like other parts of our city code, they made a recommendation on ways that they felt that our code should be updated to be more inclusive of contemporary language at bed and breakfasts and Airbnb's. So part of that recommendation from them looked at the different places in the city code that those terms could be incorporated or added into. They also looked at the place in the city code where there are definitions offered, definition of that. And they also then made what's called our transient guest tax, which is a 6% tax on, at this point motel rooms. And that is split in two ways. 3% goes to the county. And that helps in part support our activities with Athens City and Visitors Bureau and activities that we do to draw in yet more visitors to the Athens area. So the public hearing tonight is, at this point, a hearing to hear citizen response. We have received several emails, several letters, several comments, and I thank you for sending those in to us. And we will happily accept more of those via email. We'll also have the presentations here tonight, three minutes apiece, for people who want to speak. And the other thing I think I'd like to say is that, at this point, it's a public hearing and we're reviewing recommendations, seeking public comment, as is required of us by law. It could be until after the first of the year that we even begin to look at possible ordinances for making additions or clarifications to our Athens city code. So this is a very preliminary first step in our process, and I'm glad to see so many people here and interested about it tonight. All right. We will open it up for public comment. If you'll raise your hand if you want to speak, you also need to sign the sign-in sheet, and then I can recognize you and you can go up to the podium to speak. Is there anyone who would wish to speak and make comments about this tonight? Yes, Mr. Alasov.
My name is E. Balasov. I live at One Westfield Place. Earlier today, some of you guys are on Facebook or on Facebook just realized that I received a cease and desist order from Code Director Pansky, basically saying that if I did not having my bed and breakfast -- I don't even serve breakfast, by the way. I just give a room out and rent it out. I would be charged $500 a day, which is a little bit absurd, just because I rent it out to people, parents mostly, that come in during the week, on the busy weekends and stay the night. I make extra money, paid my last two mortgage payments with it. I'm told that I'll have to shut it down, and I will. I'm not about to break any, be a criminal over something so petty. But as my city officials, I would strongly recommend that you guys get in line with the 21st century and allow the economy to thrive, whether it be through Airbnb or Uber. I know Councilwoman Pappy, we've set her sights on, comes into town. It's a peer-to-peer review, a system where the whole world can see. If I did something bad as an Airbnb host, they're going to leave a bad review, and people aren't going to stay with me in the future. I know Mayor-elect Patterson, me and him were talking about this the other day at Jackie-O's, and he was saying plenty of Airbnbs, and they were good for him. I hope that these are good experiences that he had through Airbnb and shares it with the rest of you all, so maybe you guys can just cut it all. I mean, what I do in my own house, with my wife and I, is my own business, as long as I'm not harming my neighbors' life, liberty, and property. It should be no concern to you guys. And that's all I just wanted to say, is just let us have our own, let us make our money in an honest way, be able to save money, maybe have a kid. Let the other people, I know there's a few other people here, Barb and Diane, who have a house, and I just admired theirs because they have so many more nice reviews than, well, I have nice reviews, but they have many more nice reviews than me. And I know that they're probably concerned about them having to pay a fee or a fine or whatever. So I just ask you guys to come in the 21st century, let people do with their house as they want, as long as they're not bothering someone else. We're paying, we filed W-2, so the state and the federal government are getting their cut out of it. And a lot of this money's coming in, whether it be for bills, going to CASA, I mean, whatever. So just consider that. Thank you.
It's basically a public hearing, and so it's really to get comments at this point. Okay? And we can, we're going to have further discussion at the committee level when we come back again. What I'd like to do is allow as many times as we can, as many people as we can, to comment tonight. Yes, you could go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name is Aaron Reining. I'm from Millersburg, Ohio, St. Holmes County. I worked over the summer at a hotel called the Berlin Grand. And what struck me about working there as a guest service representative is how machine-oriented it is, how inorganic the communications I have as a guest service representative between myself and those who'd be staying. And if you compare that to how organic it once was, part of the cultural tradition of this country, you know, parents would send away their kids, their sons and daughters to college. And one of the ways that helped make ends meet was by inviting people who would be seeking jobs and opportunity in their towns and cities into their homes over the summer to help pay, you know, for these transactions that they're making on their kids' behalf. And I think what you're doing, and I think, is harming the community and harming the free movement of people around and the families that would benefit from that. Because you're not hurting a big Hilton Gardens, you're not hurting a Riley Hotel Group, you're hurting the individual who lives in their home, who operates on their own accord, and who wants to do no harm to anybody or have any penalized, you know, action against them for nonetheless doing something they could do for free, inviting someone to stay over the summer. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And if you could print your name on the register there, so we have a record of your name. Thank you very much. Others who'd like to speak on the topic? Yes.
Thank you. Sorry. May I first say it's a great honor to be able to speak before you tonight. Basically, I have three reasons why I believe we should be incredibly lenient when it comes to institutions like Airbnb and the rights of private citizens to sort of run their own enterprises as private citizens. The first, I must say, is quite important to quite a lot of the younger people in this Student debt in the United States has been called many things, mostly incredibly loaded words such as stifling or crushing or colostraphobic. Lots of people find that as soon as they graduate from college, they find themselves unable to make ends meet or struggling financially. Small businesses and private enterprise as private citizens provides a vital lifeline for people like this. You can, as long as you're allowed to make your own business in your own way as a student right out of college, then you can make ends meet in a legal and beneficial way to the community. You bring money into the community, you allow visitors to stay at lower costs and spend more money in local businesses. Second, local businesses, that's a buzzword thrown about quite a lot among local governments recently, the need to support local businesses, the need to keep money in the area. By sort of allowing alternative modes of accommodation like Airbnb, you allow private citizens and residents of Athens to collect money from providing a residential or hotel service rather than keeping a basic monopoly on the hospitality industry in Athens concentrated in the hands of a few large international hotels, which take the money away from this area and to their corporate headquarters. So the lastly, the last point is simply, we all know, and it's part of our national mythology, that in America we are allowed to kind of conduct our own economic affairs, to start from the beginning, to wade through debt and our sort of monetary issues through our own enterprise and our own wits and our own expertise. It's our right to climb up the greasy pole of debt and economic insecurity to prosperity as American citizens, residents, and especially residents of Athens. And lastly, I'd like to leave on one note. As Winston Churchill famously said, "Respect for laws is the key when small regulations replace..." The more small regulations that are present in a legal system, the less respect for law overall there is. Thank you and have a wonderful evening, ladies and gentlemen.
And sir, could you identify your name so the people in the viewing audience? Pardon me?
So that I'm Jack Davis.
Jack Davis, and your address?
48 East Green Drive.
East Green Drive. Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir. Come on up. And if you could print your name for us real quick, and we'll have it for the record. And then also speak it so the viewing audience knows as well.
My name is Sam Raptis. My address is 38 North McKinley Avenue, Apartment 210, Athens. I would very much appreciate the opportunity to say a couple of words on my opinion on this matter. I've never stayed in an Airbnb, but I have read about the issue, and I have certainly felt that it, I've agreed with my previous concerned citizens about Airbnb's potential. It thrives without any drag of government intervention, which ruffles a lot of people's feathers. There are personalized profiles and ranking systems maintained by users of the service, as has been pointed out. So this can serve as a kind of proto-regulation that is in fact more suitable to customers' needs than any centralized regulation. But because it thrives without government intervention, this means that the hotel industry and local government bureaucrats are somewhat threatened, who frequently have never seen an activity not worth to them taxing. And for example, in the Canadian province of Quebec, the Ministry of Tourism has warned tourists against seeking unlicensed accommodation offered by apartment owners. It has iterated that anyone caught offering lodging to tourists can, without a permit, face fines up to $20 to $50 Canadian dollars. While apartment owners there have taken to the media to tell their tales a surprise when they found out their tenants were using the service to rent to short-term travelers, they called on government to put a stop to the madness. But the problem with what they said, which was that all Airbnb operations, like hotels and B&Bs, should be responsible for collecting and remating stales and hotel taxes to governments, they argued, just because innovations that distribute and revolutionize the establishment of commerce are popular, cool, and convenient for consumers doesn't mean they should side to set taxation responsibilities. I imagine many of you in the council perhaps share that concern and perhaps are not without reason to do so. However, the problem with this assessment is that Airbnb hosts do not own hotels. They do not exist solely for making an income. Hosts agree to share their apartments with only specific people who have gone through a registration process. In exchange for opening their homes, travelers pay their hosts through the service. Property taxes on apartment dwellings are, contrary to what was pointed out earlier, still paid to the city and the province, in Canada's case, and the city in our case, and everyone benefits because it's a voluntary activity. So hostility to the housing service Airbnb puts tourism at risk. It sets a bad precedent for local tech entrepreneurs hoping to innovate. So if the government bans Airbnb and similar services the way they exist, it forces hosts and travelers into the black market, something no one wants. So rather than argue that every new idea somehow owes a cut to the government, critics of Airbnb and similar sharing services such as Uber should instead analyze the long-term benefit compared to the cost of allowing a site to operate. Along with Uber, it helps citizens, not harms them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's quite the buzzer. Is there somebody else who'd like to speak? Come on up, please. Once again, sign in for us and then state your name and address.
Sure. All right. I would like to thank council for giving students, or rather, citizens and students and everyone the opportunity to speak today. And when I look at this issue, the one thing that really concerns me is just the sense of how young people would look, how young people would view the city of Athens with regulations like this. I know for one thing, a lot of my friends, who, I asked them, you know, how do you travel around? How do you, you know, go and spend vacations? How do you, you know, have leisure time? And the thing I see repeated time and again is, they budget. They look for untraditional alternatives to staying in a hotel, simply because a lot of students just don't have the money or simply don't have the means to have an extended stay, but they still really want to go. And the more I look at that, the more I realize that if a city is going to do, if a city is going to make it hard for people like Mr. Alasov, who didn't ask me to be here, by the way, I didn't ask, he didn't ask me to speak here. I think that if young people are going to look at a city like Athens, I think the only thing that they're going to see is, I can't stay at an Airbnb, so unfortunately, I can't make the trip. Now, the reason I think that's sad is because this is such a naturally beautiful area and such a naturally warm community, that I really think it would be a shame if young people and all types of people who might be interested in coming to see all the nice and natural attractions that Athens has to offer, I think it would really be a shame if they didn't decide to take a look at our city, simply because they, you know, can't afford to come here. That's really all I have to say. And once again, I thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. Others who'd like to speak from the audience? Sure.
My name's Alan Swank. I live at 40 Townsend Place here in Athens. It's my 36th year in town. Before I get started, I'd like to ask a question of council. With a show of hands, in the last three years, how many of you have stayed in a B&amp;B? A couple of you, one council member and city law director. I ask that question for two reasons. When we make decisions as individuals in this country, we often weigh two things, our experience and the opinions of others. In this case, I was hoping to see two answers. One, how many of you have actually seen this? And if you haven't, that you would continue to entertain forums like this evening, so that those who have experience in the various forms of B&amp;Bs can share their experiences with you. But secondly, when you get together as a group and begin to hash this out, those of you who stayed, like Mike, in a B&amp;B can share your experiences, both positive and negative, with the other members of council as you come to a conclusion it's the best form of action for the citizens of Athens. As legislators, you pass legislation for two reasons. One is to promote, two is to protect. Passing positive B&amp;B legislation could potentially promote economic development through tourism in Athens County and southeastern Ohio. You obviously pass legislation to protect our water, our children, the safety of our residents with police and firefighters. But sometimes legislation does both. And I think a well-thought-out B&amp;B-led package of legislation can both promote tourism and protect the interest of all citizens of Athens. In my job, I've covered Maine to Minnesota, Minnesota to Missouri, and Missouri to North Carolina, a large part of the United States. And in that area, when we look at lists of towns that show up as the best of this and the best of that, three towns in particular show up on every list, Portland, Maine, Arlington, Vermont, and Asheville, North Carolina. I've stayed in B&amp;Bs in all three of those towns. And in fact, in the city of Asheville, North Carolina, I've visited this summer with a city planner, and she actually gave me maps of where the B&amp;Bs are located. And I will share, when I finish, a map with members of council, showing a big concentration of B&amp;Bs in the Monfort Residential area, an area much like Upper Elmwood and East State Street. Why a B&amp;B versus a hotel? I stay in hotels all the time, and I'm greeted at the front door by a representative of a corporate entity. When I stay in a B&amp;B, I am greeted by the community, the owner, the person who has a vested interest. I've never stayed in an Airbnb. My son has. He's stayed in hostels all across the world. It's a bargain way for those on a budget, or for those who want a different adventure and experience, to experience the local economy and the local people. Since we're not asking questions today, I guess I'll have to give the rest of my documents in writing to council. Thank you very much.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
These are the Asheville, North Carolina guidelines, which I've given to Steve, Paula, and I believe Chris. And I didn't make copies for everybody, I apologize, but this is an example of the concentration of B&amp;Bs in very fine homes in Asheville, North Carolina, in the Monfort Residential District. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll share these documents. Are there other people? Oh, you didn't sign in. That's true. Well, while you're doing that, we'll ask if any--
There's police out there. You better do this today.
We'll ask if there's anyone else who would like to make a comment about bed and breakfast this evening? Okay. We will encourage other people to send emails. We're often, I know, approached on the sidewalk, in Krogers, other places around town. If you have experiences and want to talk to us about it, that's helpful. I know that all of the council members, I think I can speak for all of us, saying the more information we have, the better, to help guide us, and so we appreciate your comments very much tonight.
This is my question.
Okay.
It's a good question, for the benefit of those who may be new to the city. Where is the best place for people who are interested in this topic? And now, this is when council will be discussing these matters.
It's on our main city website, and we have an agenda for our city council meetings published every week. And so if you just go to thecityofathens.org, and you can see our agendas there. I do know from hearing from councilperson Fall as Chair of Planning and Committee that we will probably not take up committee discussion until the first of the year. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Too much time, just too--
I'll tell you the way I type in, Athens City, City of Athens, Ohio. And it always comes up as the official website.
CI.Athens.OH.us
Thank you.
And you can sign up for good notification.
And likewise, all of the council members' email addresses are on the website under the city council, so you can feel free to send us messages, other additional comments. Okay. Thank you very much. We will move on to our next agenda item, which is the Finance and Personnel Committee, and we do have a special presentation tonight by the Clemmons and Nelson Law Firm, excuse me, not law firm, personnel firm. Thank you very much. Just changed your occupation there. We have Brian Butcher and James DiCaprio. And by way of a little bit of background information before we begin, they have prepared a classification compensation plan and analysis. And the purpose in their bringing that here to us tonight is for, to familiarize council members with the process of looking at the compensation of employees, our non-union employees. The purpose of this is to look at it, to make sure it's equitable, to look at the pay ranges, and then also hopefully to be able to incorporate the recommendations, some of the recommendations from this plan into our non-union benefit, fringe benefit package that we will be adopting before the end of the year. And I might want to make just one additional comment or piece of information. Clemmons Nelson is presenting, it is part of our committee meeting, but if individuals, city employees have concerns about the individual scoring of their position, that kind of question is not what we're doing tonight, but rather kind of an overview of the whole process. And so if you do have questions, we'd appreciate you taking that about the individual positions, taking those questions or concerns to your department head and then, or also our HR Director Jennifer Galbraith, who is here tonight. So I will turn the finance committee over to our chairperson, Councilmember Jeff Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Since this is a committee, we'll let you go through your presentation. You'll give us as much information as you think we need to hear, and then I'll open it for our committee and other council members to ask questions concerning what you've just talked about, and members of the administration, so.
Okay. The goal, and I was to provide you guys with a draft information of where we are in the project. Key word in there is draft information. So before anybody gets overwhelmed by the amount of info in their packet, this is certainly up for discussion and is by no means a final project. I mean, what we've done here is crammed probably a six-month, six-to-eight-month project into two months, so the document's certainly still in flux. As a preliminary matter, as you work your way through your info, you will see items that relate to city employees' pay. I do want to state from the beginning that, as a result of our preliminary recommendation, nobody was reduced in pay, and nobody has been redlined in pay. So that should put current employees at ease. The components of your packet are what I wanted to talk about tonight. The first being, it should be on your right side of your folder, called a Compensation Plan Structure and Administration Manual. You will see that is marked with draft. What this document does is it provides administration and council the means to handle all common personnel transactions such as demotions, promotions, transfers, et cetera, as well as planned maintenance in the future, desk audits, which occur when an employee's classification has been changed over time, and they want their position evaluated for purposes of classification, reclassification. Eventually, the goal is to come up with a document that would coincide with your ordinances that handle these sort of personnel transactions as well. This is a draft. As I said, it handles planned maintenance, so the goal would be able to have some sort of plan in place so that you are not doing this every year, but every three to five years, looking at, to ensure that you are staying competitive in the market and to also ensure that your workforce has not, the positions have not been altered so much that you lose your internal equity, so to speak. The other document, another document that I want to share with you is actually on the left side. It is the City of Athens, and it looks like this. It's the Wage Survey Summary, okay? Because we were under such a tight time crunch, we conducted a quick benchmark survey of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 positions of various jurisdictions throughout the state, all statutory cities, ranging in population and median household income that are similar to Athens, as well as Chillicothe, Logan, Lancaster, and Marietta, which are closer in local geography. as well as Chillicothe, Logan, Lancaster, and Marietta, which are closer in local geography. A smaller place like Nelsonville was thrown out because it doesn't have the wide variety of positions that Athens has. When you do have time, you can look through the survey. The very first page is the summary. As you look throughout, we actually have the individual responses along with the title variations by jurisdiction and the degree requirement. The very front page, what you will see is a comparison to what we are proposing, what is the preliminary recommendation for pay ranges. So that minimum and maximum under the City of Athens is then compared back to the survey average, okay? But that gives you guys a snapshot of where you guys sit in the market. This gives you what HR professionals call external equity, market rate, basically. If—then you turn to—I believe it is on the right side, and it is a document—it does say proposed implementation cost, but it's actually the small document. It's got three pages here. It has the point factor matrix. Now, when I spoke to you guys about a month and a half ago, we shared with you the criteria that we were going to use to objectively evaluate the jobs. This is the results of that objective evaluation, okay? And you can see the logical—logical breaks. Those logical breaks are used to determine pay grade assignment, okay? Each of these factors was vetted by an associate of my firm. They evaluated the objective criteria against the job analysis questionnaires that were obtained by the city over the last, I believe, year and a half. And then we shared these calculations with the city. They are obviously still in draft format, but these are the preliminary ratings for each job. The one thing that we did do is one person did this evaluation, so that way you don't have any subjectivity in the evaluation. And once again, as we spoke last time, this is a common process used—used throughout organizations across the country, both public and private sector. The last thing, maybe the second-to-last thing I would like to share with you are—they are on the left side of your folder—the actual proposed pay grades along with the proposed wage scale. And you can see the differences from the current wage scale versus the proposed wage scale. One of the issues we ran into when meeting with department heads and evaluating the pay scale objectively on our own was that for a city your size, nine pay grades was creating what we call compression issue. Many jobs of various skill sets are still being compressed into the same pay range. So what our initial recommendation is, is to expand this to 12 pay grades, and it actually works out with the point factor matrix. This would be in order to accommodate the various classifications, as well as you have to understand that any organization, particularly a public sector organization, is driven from the bottom up, oftentimes driven by labor contracts from the bottom up. So when we look at this, not only are we looking at the market, but we're looking at incentivizing employees to better themselves and avoiding what we call wage compression between the rank and file and the supervisory positions. What happens in some organizations that don't do the process that you're going through right now is you often fall into a situation where somebody is not encouraged to take on more responsibility because the pay does not often reflect that responsibility, and they are content to stay in that position. So that is something else we have addressed through—the addition of pay grades. If you look, the top pay grade is slightly higher than the top pay grade of the old scale. But I think what you'll find is that Athens was not too far out of whack, so to speak. There were—there was definitely areas where we have recommended grade changes. In fact, we have recommended—and you'll see this throughout the documentation—six reclassifications. The reclassifications are positions that we believe that the individuals in those jobs are actually doing higher-level job duties. They're driven by job duties, not job titles, okay? But we actually recommend that, I believe, there are six individuals receive a reclassification. That's based on the JAQ they filled out, based on the supervisors, and based on our—on our consultation with city administration.
Is that in the big plan?
That is actually in the giant document that is folded in half. Uh, no, 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 no.
Oh, that's not—
Yes. Correct, James?
Yep.
Okay. That giant document, which is folded in half, because the question is, everybody sees the recommended pay changes, and they—and the obvious first step is to ensure that everybody gets on the pay grade that's recommended. That means if there's somebody below, that you get them to the minimum. You do that for purposes of integrity of the pay plan. You don't want to have a pay plan with somebody off it. Since we don't have anybody redlined, meaning nobody's above the scale, you guys don't have to deal with that issue. So what the next thing—in the next phase, in which I believe council needs to discuss among themselves at a time separate from tonight, is along with city administration, is how you deal with current staff. I will tell you right now, that comes at a cost. What we have done is we have provided examples of ways we have handled this in various jurisdictions. And one of the reasons why you do adjust current staff is—if you don't, tomorrow you're going to hire somebody in at that same wage rate that's somebody who's given you seven, six, 10 years of service, where they could be in the—in the pay scale. The question I get, well, how do you objectively evaluate that? There are various ways. Different public entities value different pay philosophies differently. I have one client who, when I recommend these changes based on tenure, based on tenure and the position, they get nervous at the word tenure, you know, another step or another year, another pay increase. And they chose to do it through a merit system. That's just the way the client has done it. But I will tell you, when I use the word tenure here, I am talking about a one-time implementation cost, not a step plan, something to get somebody within the pay grade, the quartile, midpoint, some portion in that pay grade that—which would reflect the service that they've given to the City of Athens in that position, position only. And the reason why we typically only do position is because typically when you are promoted, you're getting a raise anyway by virtue of going into a higher-level position, okay? This is—these are just ideas. This is not a hard recommendation. What you will see here is what the cost would be to bring somebody to the minimum on the pay scale, the cost that it would take to take somebody through the one- and two-year progression. And as you can see, we've assigned arbitrary figures of 7.5 and 15%. The reason that being that you want people to advance through the beginning of the pay scale. One thing that we have noticed across the state when working with public sector clients is as the economy—as the economy kind of stalled over the last four or five years, people were getting stuck at the beginning of their pay scales. So one thing you're going to see a lot of public sector employers are doing are they're trying to force people through that first quartile. So that's the one-year and two-year. And then we have also included a five-year and a 10-year projection. You'll see the cost to those staff members or that job classification. And that's not to say that it has to be done this way, but I just wanted city council to actually see that—all this sounds great. A lot of times when they see the sticker price, people slow down a little bit. There are different ways to do it. You can phase it in. You can do it over a couple of years. Clemmons Nelson is here to help you with all of that. But what we wanted to do was make sure that council was fully aware of the progress of the project, along with the information that we've obtained, and share it with the Finance and Personnel Committee tonight. And I am free to answer any questions from council right now. I know it's a ton of information, so.
Any questions from council? I think we're just all banking fire hose here, so I'm still trying to swallow it all down, my head wrapped around it.
That's—that's good. What I would probably suggest is to take it—take it back, digest it, funnel any—any questions back through probably HR, and we will get you guys answers. We have no problem coming next meeting or whenever else you guys need us—need us involved. I know that you were under a tight time crunch for the end of the year. As an—as a person who has been through a lot of these, my advice is don't rush it. Take your time. It's good to get through the beginning of this project, and what we've done is provided you guys a lot of baseline info. But as we have seen, anytime you do a compensation plan, not everybody's happy, and you're not going to make everybody happy. But our goal is just to put you guys in a place where we are equitably compensating people, and we want you to be comfortable with the decisions you've made. Okay?
Madam President?
Yes, and council members have been reviewing an earlier draft, so—
This is new info. There were slight tweaks to it, so.
And so we have begun to absorb all of this, but we appreciate all the work that you have done, that James DiCaprio has done, also that Jennifer Galbraith has done on—on helping us with this. And all the persons who—in administration and department chairs who, you know, helped complete the J—the job questionnaires, those took a fair amount of time. What's helpful for us is that we have the expertise from your firm to, you know, have an objective kind of look at where our city stands amidst other Ohio cities that are similar in size to ours, and also to know that your other recommendation is, we're doing this now—we have done this in the past. It's not the first time we're doing it now. We need to be counted on doing this on a periodic basis so that we keep this up to date.
Absolutely.
So.
Councilman Patterson?
Thank you. I'm just curious, will there be further tweaking to this document that we should be made aware of, or?
It really depends on—I—I don't see the pay grades—the—the pay grid changing. The only other way it would be tweaked is if somebody can change this guy's mind back here who did the evaluations of—the job classifications. The one thing that we do value is sticking to our guns. That does not mean that we have on occasion changed our mind based on classifications. The biggest decision that you guys have is—for purposes of incumbent employees—is how you're going to adjust them, if you're going to adjust them, and what sort of philosophy you want—you want to undertake. I think you can see that the—to get—the—the cost to get people on the scale is—is—is small. It's after the fact what the cost is. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Other questions? Administration, you have anything to say?
Just so we get it electronically so we can look at the latest version.
Absolutely. We'll get you everything. And then double-check everybody's pay rate, because that sometimes gets wrong too, so. Okay?
And I can state that there is a number of department heads, including myself, who satisfy some of the slotting of the positions. So I hear what you're saying, that you're sound pretty rigid. It'll be interesting to see how we communicate those—those directly as we move forward.
Can you explain what you just said a little bit more? That was confusing. Right, Mike?
Trying not to identify specific—and that's why I removed myself from this process, because there's position and the person—the individual in the position, and that's—so I've removed myself. But when I see some secretary administrative assistants being two or three classifications beyond each other, one classified is working full-time versus part-time positions, that—that does not make sense. And it doesn't—not just make sense to me. We've got a number of employees who are seriously distressed over the results of this, so.
Mr. Kennerberry? Just a quick comment and kind of one of the things that, you know, from where we appreciate you coming in to put a document together. But again, it's up to—I would rather listen to the administrative side because they're the ones that has the hands on the factor there. They deal with these people every day, and you don't. And so when you're putting together this package, I want to hear what they have to say, because they're the ones that's going to have to deal with that in the aftermath of whatever we do with it. And yeah, it can be changed, is that, you know, we don't have to put our arm to do it. Council can do that, too.
No doubt. You guys got a level there.
You know, I just want to kind of reiterate, I would rather listen to the ministry when it comes to changes that they need to see, because they're the ones that have to work with it every day.
Except, we're talking about job duties, right? I mean, you're looking strictly—you're—you're taking the personality out of it.
I take the personality. It's job duties, and with respect to—
Administration.
—the Safety Service Director's opinion about the full-time versus part-time, I will tell you that in the public sector, that there are situations, full-time and part-time are compensated differently. You'll see that most—mostly in fire services in certain industries. The fact is that part-time versus full-time is often evaluated from an HR's perspective based on volume of work. If—if—if I'm a part-time secretary doing work next to a full-time secretary, and we're doing the same stuff at the same time, oftentimes those people are compensated the same, but not as much based on the volume. Now, there are certain industries like fire—you'll see fire services. Part-time firefighters are always compensated less than—than full-time firefighters. Now, that's something like—like Mr. Kennerberry said, that you guys have the right—you guys don't have to listen to us. I'm just here to provide transparent recommendations to you, and—and, you know, you guys do have to live with it. We get to go home, so.
Way to put it. To the administration, let me ask—the wage skill proposal, I think you've seen it?
We just received the most recent tweaks, one of which we had seen the previous.
Okay, the most recent. The expansion from nine to 12. Does that look doable? Do you like it?
Pay grades.
I wouldn't see any problem with that myself, but again, you know, how it plays out in terms of where everybody ends up and what grade would make the difference, would— I think probably gives you a better—you know, the more you cut it up, the better it fits. Everybody fits in, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Well, the explanation I received was that the compression had caused this, so the Frankly, we'll be asking for some serious consideration from other department heads who have given a response, including myself, for some of the slotting.
But there shouldn't be an issue, though, of someone who's, say, currently in pay grade two at a certain minimum wage, and they now expanded to the new scale, which would put them at three grade. It looks to me like they're—they get a raise to do that. Would that be an issue?
There's a range of wage—wage raises proposed in here from six cents to $2.47 to maybe over $3, just to—
And to be even more clear, it's—it's zero cents in a number of cases, too, where it doesn't change at all.
Would that be an issue?
In a perfect world, we'd give everybody the same amount, everybody be happy. I'm just warning everybody that when you do a compensation plan, it—it becomes, hey, it becomes a point game. So-and-so over here is making this, so-and-so's over there, instead of looking—which is what we try to do. We try to just look at the position. We—that's—the—that's the benefit, is we don't know the people, so.
Let me just throw this out.
I repeat, the job analysis questionnaires are written by the person in that position. So to me, there's some inherent bias in terms of what they do. I've been told whether supervisor signs off on that, but I don't know what—to what level of detail they've reviewed that, or even thinking that this is, you know, your job analysis question.
So you said the employee wrote their own job description?
They write their own response to this job analysis question, all of them.
Okay. And you think they're maybe deliberately injecting bias favorably?
I do not mean—I just—I'm just talking—that's why I had to remove myself from it, because there's a level of subjectivity in what people sometimes view as what they're producing and what they're doing. There just is.
Senator Kennerberry?
I have been a little on that, is that if a person's writing for their job, well, they felt that their job was more important than their job.
Well.
So, you know, they're always going to pick their job even better. So I absolutely blame it on that.
Mr. Mayor?
A lot of—in terms of JAQs, of course, a lot would depend on how well you write, like any test, essay tasks or essay quiz, how often you've done it. I've done several at the university level, and poorly, and I've done them better, depending on time. I mean, you know, I've put down my walk on water. Of course, they question that if the supervisor actually reads it. So therefore, you know, that—I think that's for physical activity. I get high points. So therefore, you know, I think that's for physical activity, I would get high points with that. So therefore, a lot of the, you know, it'd be interesting, I guess, the exercise I would look down the road for is that, yeah, pay grades, I think that would prevent a compression. I think if you add the pay grade, put it somewhere along the line, you'd have to actually do a whole nother set of JQs, just to see how the shift is in terms of what people are actually thinking they're doing. Again, they're biased, they usually think their job's more important than everybody else's. But how they evaluate the jobs, the discussion we got earlier today at the staff meeting was activities, wasn't it, for the fire chief and the police chief? They don't do any activities according to this. They're not, it's not a, you know, but you know that.
There's no physical involvement, whereas we know there is.
Yes, we know both of them are on the streets doing their job, you know? And sometimes because we have such a staffing level, they do that quite a bit. So therefore, how do you, you know, they're not a level one, are they a level three, you know, in that evaluation? And again, it comes down to how they evaluate themselves, how well they, I'm a good test taker. You know, I've walked in all the time, done SITs easily, but that's because I have forte for that. Although, if it's an essay question, forget it, you know? But that's it. Everybody has their strengths on reporting these things, too. And hopefully that the supervisor has separated the position from the person, too.
I really don't want to get into the weeds, but I'm going to wander a little ways in. During the whole process that you guys went through, was there cases that you looked at, you were sitting there going, this can't, this can't be real? You know, or someone not reporting enough, or someone reporting too much? How much of that do you see in this whole process when you're looking at?
A lot. That's one of the reasons you rely on the supervisors, they've got the JQs as well. And that's one of the reasons why James has been in constant contact with Jennifer to clarify job duties, to clarify, you know, we met with each department head and walked through their table of organization with them. Because that oftentimes, the span of control gives great evidence to what the weight of certain responsibilities are. But it happens all the time. Like the mayor said, you know, certainly, from my experience, everybody thinks their job's the most important in the world, and if the supervisor didn't vet it, it could be inflated. At what point, you know, we do a lot of these, Athens is very special, but there are a lot of cities out there that are very similar as well, and we have worked with over 300 public employers. So sometimes we can weed through some of that on our own as well. That doesn't mean you're going to agree with where we put them, though. Our goal is to give you guys a baseline, and I think the reoccurring theme is you guys got to live with it. So if there are changes that need to happen, you guys got to be comfortable with the decision you make.
My question for asking is, a lot of this is recall-based.
Oh, I understand completely. I understand.
As a researcher myself, a psychologist at that, we tend to know that recall is not a great way to go about, not seeing your process, I'm just saying, you know, things can, people can also be at the other end of the spectrum, instead of over inflating, they can be humble and just go, you know? And they're not technically reporting what they're actually doing.
I think the other thing to understand is that this project was compressed into two months. We have one, it's going on eight right now with a major county, and there's tweaks, we've made hundreds of tweaks to it, so it just, it happens. But eventually, at some point in time, you've got to say, this is, this is what it's going to be.
Right.
And, you know, then you make changes as, it's not going to be a fluid document. There's going to be job, I would assume when the new administration comes in, there's going to be duties that shift around. If those duties shift and the job actually changes in a material way, it should be sent through a desk audit and re-point factored and replaced as well. And that's just what happens.
Mr. Mayor? Do you have any questions?
Just a comment. I think it's a good start. I have to agree, it's quite a bit of work for the short period of time. We have to, we do recognize the fact that people will be unhappy with it. I mean, you just have to look at how you're wrestling with the pool items these days. So, you know, again, the, you know, I would say study it, take a look at it, you look at the implementation cost of what's it going to be there. I know we'll get more feedback from our staff at this point. The next administration's going to have to deal with more than I will at this point. But thank you. I think it's a good, it's a good representation of what's going on. I think there's some good ideas here.
I would follow up on what the mayor said. I really appreciate this. I felt like with my four years on council, I needed something like this. I don't know that this has ever been done in the city, and I've had questions that I, nobody could really answer, or about certain ways things happened, and so I appreciate somebody looking in from the outside. I understand what, some people may have some trepidation about people looking from the outside, and that's natural, but I think we really need to drill down, so I appreciate what the mayor said, that we, we need some, we need this process, and it's a good start.
Any questions you guys have, please get to Jennifer. I'm sure we will be in talk with her probably tomorrow on a lot of this, so. But we'll do our best to get you guys the best product that you guys can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're continuing with Finance and Personnel Committee, and you have stop-loss insurance next?
Yes, stop-loss insurance, whatever that is.
Okay.
Hopefully, we have an expert here who will explain all this. So, let's hear it from our HR person, Jennifer Galbraith.
Good evening. I am here to ask on behalf of the city to extend our contract for our current stop-loss carrier, BP, not the gas station, is our stop-loss carrier, and they've been working with UMR for a very, very long time. We have reviewed the numbers and have decided to stick with the same deductible that we had from last year, which was $110,000. This is going to result in approximately a 2.8% increase in premiums for employees. So, I feel very confident that our employees will be happy with that. So, there you have it.
That's it?
That is it.
Any questions? Administration, anyone?
The only inquiry is, what is our deadline? It's up for a reading tonight?
It is December 1st.
December 1st.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So I think you all know what that means.
No, please explain.
It's up for first reading this evening.
Oh.
Counselor and resident. Don't believe you reconvene until December 7th.
That's correct. Regular council, you know, as voting council. Anyone on the council have any questions here?
It's not up?
It's not up.
So just, what was it, 2.8%?
2.8%. 2.8% right, increase in the.
In the premiums. Our, the employee premiums for our medical insurance are based upon total fixed costs, which that also stayed stagnant. It was $24.75. It's actually stayed that way for the past three years. So, we're very fortunate to have that. And then, along with, just staying with the same deductible that went up maybe 3% or 4%. So when you do the calculation for the premium, which for non-union employees, 35% of your fixed cost plus the stop-loss, it ended up being an average of 2.8% increase over last year.
We have a question about the expiration, because we were under the impression from the last year that it expires on December 31st.
And it is not up for first reading this evening, they don't have the ordinance.
So we thought that it did not need to begin.
The renewal, we have, it is for January 1st, but we have to give a, the renewal date is December 1st. That's what, we have to make a decision.
Okay, so consensus of council is probably sufficient then with the discussion tonight then in finance and personnel. Is that something that you could clarify with the person? We don't want to jeopardize a lapse in the coverage. But I know in other cases, that discussion at the committee level has been sufficient for some of the persons, the companies that we deal with, so.
This is simply getting back to BP, saying we are going to renew. There's a renewal expiration date, but it's effective for January 1st, 2016.
So that's what they'd like to check?
Yes.
Yes.
We want the answer also by December 1st, because I want to make sure we can solidify the premiums for our employees, because open enrollment starts December 1st.
Okay.
Well, it'd be the recommendation of this committee to move forward with it, so. Is that sufficient?
That's sufficient.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Ask Me Local 24032 Union Contract. Just happen to have a copy of it right here. I think everyone has a copy. We've read it. It's my understanding we have a tenant agreement between both parties, city and the union. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. We're bringing it up in committee, because technically, theoretically, we could introduce an ordinance tonight and have a first reading. So I'd like to hear any comments about this. It's not public domain, not documents, so the public has a right to know. Questions, comments? Sure you've read all 55 pages?
Hope so.
What I did over the weekend, actually, it's 35 pages, I exaggerate. I'm not an expert in union negotiations or this type of contract, but I do know that both parties seem to have negotiated in good faith, and I think they reached an agreement. I'm not going to second-guess the negotiators on this, so I will recommend that we go forward with the ordinance tonight.
I would say so.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Let's do it. Next item, appropriations. We still have appropriations?
I need $689 to pay that paving bill for the cemetery. I didn't have the.
Does that thing still lie?
I'm sorry. So it's an end-of-year bill that I really would like to move along.
This is the issue that just never dies. It just goes on and on.
We like giving you something to talk about, Jeff.
Thank you. Well, I think we can work on that. I believe we'll be in an ordinance tonight. I believe you want to suspend it so that we can actually pay the bill?
Yes, yes.
And you can see we have the $200,000 for the medical fund. And the other one is moving some money around from the community center. One of the things I do not see in here, actually, and was brought up, I think I saw a missive coming between you and the auditor's office about TC 100s being short for the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
I believe they were talking about the community center, recreation.
Internal services.
And water administration.
Water admin. But we don't have figures, so.
Of what we're short. I mean, we can do a guesstimate if you choose, but that would maybe up to the auditor to say why.
I don't have any figures in front of me either.
Yes.
Okay.
We did get that, as I say, the notice that we have problems, but we don't know what the extent of the problem is. So, we asked somebody, but nobody's here to actually address it.
Okay. Well, Finance and Personnel is planning on having a special meeting next week. We can certainly put that on the agenda, discuss it. I've invited all interested parties, and I'll send out the agenda to everyone, make sure they get it. We'll discuss that at the end of the regular session, I suppose.
Okay, thank you.
Miscellaneous. Anyone have any miscellaneous for Finance and Personnel?
Just letting you know, I'm still working on the budget.
Okay.
Trying to put it together.
It's good to know.
Yes. I could send you my incomplete forms, but it'd only be confusing you. It's up to, I don't know how many tabs, it's usually a spreadsheet, I keep adding departments and notations as time goes on. Lots of commentary, so.
We will have one by the end of the year.
We will have one by the end of the year.
Okay, that's, I'm sure some people would appreciate knowing that.
Yes.
I don't have anything else on my desk here about this.
Okay, then we'll move on to City and Safety Services Committee. Chair by Councilmember Patterson.
A couple items tonight, two miscellaneous rather than one item. One is an ordinance that's going to be coming forward for the depot lift station, which is basically going to be authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept vids for construction and construction engineering in Project 286. And then there's also going to be a series of transfers, appropriations and transfers for this project, because if I'm not mistaken, the project is $835,000, give or take, so there will be amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance, 1/2014, for $400,000 from the sewer debt fund, and then transferring that sum to, from the sewer debt fund into the sewer fund, 750, and then appropriating the $400,000 from the sewer plant fund, 750. And then after that, it's a series of accounts in which the Service Safety Director is going to be authorized to come up with that sum of $835,000, which will come from accounts such as the sewer fund, CDBG 248, TC 300, which would be in the amount of $17,400, and then $357,000 from the 2016 CDBG 248, TC 500.
Okay.
The other, the two miscellaneous, I should add, with that particular ordinance, the one for the depot, the lift station, is that that will be suspended, that particular lift station is handling about one-third of the city's sewage, in particular down by the, within the medical corridor, the hospital corridor and whatnot. So, it's highly important that this project gets underway.
Can I ask a question about that?
You can.
Will this give us increased capacity? So if there's further expansion down West Union, which theoretically might happen, we'll be in a good position to.
I think the, actually, the president one has the capacity, the question is it's old and needs to be repaired. I mean, I think it's going to give about the same capacity, if not a little bit more, but it's not like we're expanding the whole footprint of it or anything like that, we just want to rebuild it and make sure it's operating. This was actually a grant that was suggested by HAPCAP, a critical facility grant, that we've never tried before. So part of this offset with the CDBG is to do that. It's kind of being run through, through HAPCAP in terms of administration. But again, it's, I forget the age of it, I thought, I saw a breakdown at one point where, was it Strand, I think, did an evaluation, and this is like 30 or 40 years old. The building's falling apart.
Right.
So therefore, it needs to be dealt with, yes.
And we've been there.
Yeah. Oh, you did take a tour?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
On our street.
I didn't go on a street tour, but I guess you had a grand old time there, okay? I used to work in Life Science Building there, so I know it pretty well. So, you know, we have the capacity at this point. I'm not worried about the capacity, just the age of the system.
And this is just needed to upgrade our existing infrastructure. If the sewer corridor ever occurs, we have, they've already identified the three points on where we would be installing the new mechanisms for control, measurement, and what have you.
Okay, good.
There's efficiency upgrades to this project, too, isn't there?
There is.
Yeah.
And safety.
Am I?
Member Fall.
Thank you. Am I correct in remembering that there was discussion about public art being a part of this at some point?
There is. I went to AMAC last week, as did you, and we, basically, we, in order to get, our biggest experience of that was the roundabout, and it works best if we can build our project and then allow the public art component to come in. So I told them they're looking essentially at 2017.
Thank you.
First item under miscellaneous, Member Fall has, wants to talk about refugee-related resolution.
I think I wanted to put together a resolution of all council to look, to address the verbiage that's being used over the weekend with Syrian and other refugees from the Middle East. I think that Athens, as we all know, has been a very accepting and tolerant city, and I would like to put that into words so that we have. I would like to put that into words so that we have it be known by everybody, and it would also be sent out to everybody, so that it's not, you know, it's not just the governor who's saying things, but Athens itself. So I will put that together and send out drafts. If that makes sense.
Can you share? We had a physician reach out to the mayor regarding refugees. I don't know if you received a copy of that or not, a local physician here. Probably almost a month and a half to two months ago.
About two months ago. Mostly about the migration of, from Africa, North Africa to Europe. I didn't really respond. There seemed to be some enthusiasm about it. My only caveat was, you know, are we talking about turning your house into rental, and how do we actually, the mechanics of it?
Right.
I mean, have somebody come to your house and take care of them, or have them stay well and good? But it's the same thing as the sharing economy we're talking about, we just discussed earlier tonight. The last time I saw, sharing economies really in communes in the 70s. So the same time, I did respond, because it sounded like they had an interest. It sounded like they were going to take off on their own. My only worry was whether it impacted us in terms of rentals or not.
Right.
So it's not like I'm not being inclusive. I was quizzed by the Athens news about this.
Yes, but the number of individuals that would come to any place, it's just that right now, there's so much vitriol that's going on, and I think that it behooves people who are in leadership positions to say that it's not necessarily right to say some of the things that have been said.
I agree with you. From my, from my point of view, it's a, it's a non-issue, unfortunately, because I, you know, this is, you know, this is America. You can go where you choose to go, you know? And I think, you know, the statute of liberty is there for a reason, to be inclusive, and we're an inclusive city, so. It's, I, you know, you know, that question to me is like, what are you talking about?
Yes, unfortunately, for other people, has to be, they have to be reminded.
I guess so, okay.
So I will put that together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second miscellaneous, Member Pappy is going to talk about 682 Bridge Project.
Right. Later this evening, we have what we thought was the full ordinance, but apparently, we're going to have to have a Part 2 to the 682. As you all recall, we're in the third reading for the bridge project at 682, crossing over 33. And now we've been told by ODOT, there needs to be a second component, and so we'll be bringing further, further ordinance the next time we meet to address that. I guess they're doing it in two phases. Likewise, there needs to be two separate ordinances, and we weren't totally aware of that from the beginning. So that's what's happening. So next time we meet, we will bring forward that second part of the ordinance.
So one of them's for the painting, and the other one's for the?
Decking.
Decking on the bridge itself, which is sorely needed for that particular bridge.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, we kind of thought it was all together initially. We thought painting, decking, that all meant one thing, but apparently, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Probably has more to do with their funding stream and how they do it, but I don't know.
Thirty-three.
So we'll be bringing a second one.
Signage.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other items?
That's it, Madam President.
Okay, we'll move on to our special session. And our first item will be to establish a quorum, and we have that quorum with all city council members present. We'll now have ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 10815, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $100,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring the new fire truck and related equipment and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Well, this has been discussed a lot. The only thing I could add here is the new fire truck actually refers to the latter truck, which is not our new, new fire truck, but our, our older new fire truck.
To adopt.
Little clearer.
And do you have a motion to approve this ordinance?
Yes, I will. I'll get around to that, but I just thought I really needed to say that. So I, with that proviso, I move to adopt 010815.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 10815. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 10915 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $550,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of improvements to its municipality's wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
This one, I just vote to adopt, 10915.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of ord-
There's a question, Miss Ray?
No questions. It says comp. The interest rate is 0.4, 0.4, so you know. So it's under 1% for both bond issues we're putting out there.
This is local.
Local.
Through a local bank, and many thanks to the banks for, bank for the support. So I do believe I heard a motion and a second for approval of this ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11015, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state agreement for a bridge painting project on Athens' state route 682 and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to adopt 11015.
Second.
And this is for the upgrades to the 682 bridge.
Okay.
Part one.
We have a motion and a second for 11015. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance is for second reading. Ordinance 11115 is an ordinance authorizing a contract extension of the city's third-party administrator for medical insurance and prescription coverage and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 11215 is an ordinance establishing the maximum age limitation for an original appointment to the Athens City Police Department. That's introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 11315 is an ordinance authorizing an extension of the current franchise agreement with the Ohio Power Company for use of the city right-of-way as authorized by ordinance 14313, and extended by ordinance 12614, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall. Ordinance 11515 is an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 11, Business Regulations, Chapter 11.10, Contractor Registration, and Declaring an Emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Fall. And now we have several ordinances for first reading. The first one is 11615, an ordinance authorizing the adoption of a three-year agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 2403-2, and the Ohio Council 8 AFL-CIO concerning wages and working conditions and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the ordinance here. I can read it for the public record. Section 1, the employment agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 2403-2, Ohio Council 8 AFL-CIO, code enforcement officers, a copy of which is attached heretofore and incorporated therein by reference and B is hereby adopted. Now, we're not suspending, correct?
No, you do not have to. Traditionally, oftentimes, these contracts, because they come in after expiration, have been suspended in order to get the retroactive pay calculated or other items. I do know we're pretty tied up against a 30-day timeframe. The law director was just reviewing that with me. So it may be that December 7th would be the second reading.
That you could suspend that on the second reading? Or is that what you're saying?
If that's the desire of council, I said.
Well, it'd be nice to have some guidance here.
When's the 30 days?
Or is, but well, then you'd have to have a special session, so.
Customer canary.
Or can you suspend the rules and go ahead and do it, since it's been recommended by our bargaining team?
And there, as you can see, the date this was to take effect was October 4th. And that's not unusual in contract negotiations, that you go beyond the expiration of that date, and we always have the retroactive clause in there, so it's retroactive.
There's no hurry.
I would, I would recommend not, not suspending tonight.
Okay.
Suspend on the second reading. How's that sound?
I can live with that.
Okay.
Okay. To continue, Section 2, an ordinance, ordinance is a resolution inconsistent with the terms of the attached agreement, are hereby repealed. Section 3, the effective date of the agreement is October 4th, 2015. It is a three-year contract ending October 7th, 2018. Section 4, the ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Athens, and so on and so forth. So we will take this up on December 7th, suspend, and hopefully pass.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on for the first reading of ordinance 11715, an ordinance amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Ah, back to the cemetery. Doesn't seem to get out of there. Section 1, 2015 Appropriation Ordinance 0125. And by the way, I'm going to, let's just stop. I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. Reason for suspension is, we need to pay this.
Thank you.
We're dying to pay it.
We're dying to pay it.
Why'd you have to say that? Come on, Jen.
And it has dropped it?
We have a motion and a second for suspending the rules for ordinance 11715. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, Mr. Reisner, the rules have been suspended.
And I finish here. I get easily distracted. The 2015 Appropriation Ordinance 012014 is hereby amended by appropriating from the appropriate balance the following sum: $689 to the general fund, 101- or dot 115, cemetery TC 500, to pay final envoys for cemetery paving, increase the total appropriations by set amount. I move to adopt.
Second.
11715.
Second.
Okay, we have a second for approval of ordinance 11715. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11815 is an ordinance authorizing construction and construction engineering services for the depot lift station, which is project 286, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend the rules for ordinance 118-15.
Second.
Thank you. Reason for suspension, again, this is a critical piece of infrastructure, moving a large sum of sewage through the city.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for suspending the rules for 11815. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Patterson.
I move to adopt ordinance 18-15.
Second.
Thank you. Again, this is an ordinance to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids for construction, construction engineering, as well as appropriating $400,000 from the sewer debt fund, 758, transferring to the sewer fund, 750, and then to hereby authorize expenditure up to $835,000 on the depot, depot lift station.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for approval of this ordinance for this large project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. We now have a resolution for second reading. This is R 1415, a resolution of the city council of the city of Athens, Ohio, approving the issuance by the Public Finance Authority of bonds on behalf of AHA Colonial Village LLC. This is introduced by all council members. We will have one more reading of that next week. So we're now at the adjournment for our council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for adjournment of the city council meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We're adjourned at 8:27 PM. Thank you very much.